Hello and welcome. You're viewing the Citizens Journalist Podcast Mesa County Compass. That brings you the news that you can use from a different point of view. I'm Ruth.
I'm Lisa.
And together we are Mesa County Compass. Our goal is to create an informed, current, active citizenry armed with facts. We will be covering what's new, what's new to you, what it means to you, what you can do about it, and provide you access to the decision makers when we can. Good afternoon, welcome to Mesa County Compass. This afternoon, we have Jason Bias who is running for Mesa County Commissioner, and we'd like to learn a little bit more about him. So, welcome Jason.
Thank you.
And please give us a little bit of information about yourself, your background, how you got into this, why you got into this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Those kind of things, if you would.
Yeah, I'm a young politician, I'm 24 years old, I'll be 25 come election time.
Oh yay!
I have a beautiful wife and three loving kids. We're just working our way up, building our future. And I kind of got involved in politics back in 2016 when Trump was running for president.
Wow.
That was my senior year of high school and I did speech and debate that year. I did a student council, so I was getting really, really involved with just politics and I kind of became obsessed with it. It's kind of unique, but I've grown up in Mesa County, I've been here my whole life. My wife and kids were all born and raised here and I just, I believe there's a bright future ahead of us. We're growing, we're growing geographically, economically, and just so excited to be a part of it.
You're good, okay. And what do you currently do since you're not county commissioner right now?
Yeah, I do a lot of things. I'm currently a full-time student at CMU. I studied political science with minoring in philosophy. Yeah, I just love theories and stuff. I'm a manager at Texas Roadhouse, I joined the manager team a little bit ago. I've been working there for almost a year and a half. Before that, I was doing electrical work, I was wiring up a lot of houses down here in the valley. That's what I do right now, just leadership over at Texas Roadhouse and school.
Very good, okay, that keeps you busy. And three kids.
And three kids, yes.
And your wife.
I don't have a second to myself. Beautiful golden retriever.
Well, you want to start with your question Ruth, or?
Well, I'm gonna ask, first of all, you were at Stanford the Constitution and spoke quite eloquently, I might say.
Thank you so much.
At that time. And I want you to give us a little bit about your three major points that you wanted to touch on. You did say that there were three things that you thought that was worth running for.
Oh, 100%.
So if you would give us some clarification on that, please.
Yeah, so if you were there at Stanford Constitution, you heard, my biggest things is just economic growth. Like I said, we're growing geographically and economically. I just want to see more food on everyone's plates, especially my own. I'm one of the people. So that's a big thing, is just growing economically and maintaining our fiscal responsibility. But there's so many issues surrounding Mesa County that we can touch on. Another thing that I'm really, really passionate about is fiscal responsibility, right? We, as a Mesa County Commissioner, you're in charge of allocating money and funding businesses and helping essentially our economy boom financially. So by doing that, you have to be responsible with this money, right? We need to be spending it on the new roads that leads to these local businesses and help them grow and invest your time into nonprofits and churches and watch what they can do for the community as well. Kind of work as a team. So along with economic growth and fiscal responsibility, my third point is going to be with the educational system. As a father of three children, my children are all in school. I think it's important and it's imperative that we invest our time into our children. They're going to be running our country in the next few years. By doing that, I mean, we need to advocate for public and private schools, charter schools, Christian universities, whatever's gonna be best for parents and children to get the best education.
Okay, okay. I want you to give me some specifics, because that's the kind of person I am.
Yeah.
It's finances and growth. What does that growth look like? And how do the county commissioners impact that growth? I mean, what do you think their role is in growth specifically?
Yeah, so I mentioned it before, their role specifically in growth is funding, right? They handle all business money as well as promote policies to attract these businesses. And they oversee a ton of departments out here in Mesa County.
They do.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just looking for the specifics of economics. You know, how do we actually go about impacting this growth that you want to see? And what kind of growth?
Yeah, so.
And controlling that growth? I mean, because it's not all growth is good.
Yeah, the Convay Act that was recently passed, the Clifton Onway, that just allocated 32 more acres to Mesa County. And I know 32 acres isn't a lot, but that just covers all of south of I-70 in the Clifton area. So by taking utilization of that area, we can allocate and promote local businesses such as, I mean personally, I want to see a lot of rec center and a lot of stuff to do out here in the valley for not only the youth, but for everyone. I think it's really cool that we're building a Grand Junction rec center. I don't think it's cool about the transparency of where the money is coming from. I do think that it should be definitely clear. I signed that petition that all of our tax money should be shown where it's gonna go when it gets approved. I'm sure you guys are prepared about that petition running around.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. So that transparency is really important. By building more jobs, that's gonna, of course, grow our population as well, right? More people are gonna be coming from outside counties to Mesa County. We are the fourth biggest county in Colorado, geographically speaking, not population. So there's just so much room that we can be putting buildings, more schools, research facilities, rec centers, it's a lot, there's a lot that we can do.
Hey, I'm gonna throw a little curve at you here.
Yeah, go ahead.
There are a lot of folks, myself included, that would like to see Grand Junction maintain its rural feeling, if you will. If we started attracting business and more people and things like that, where will that rural feel come from? Will it leave us?
No, that's one thing that us as Mesa County citizens will not allow, right? Our agriculture is what founded Mesa County and a lot of the agriculture is what keeps the community together. Like the local farm market every Thursday during the summer, that's a bunch of farmers bringing in their produce, bringing in their knowledge and experience and giving it to the community. And that needs to be protected. Water rights is a huge, huge involvement with that. And I've spoken with local farmers and they're really scared about the future and losing their water because that's gonna decrease our agriculture and that's gonna decrease our rural. And I do fear that the government's gonna take advantage of that and obliterate it. But I do know that us as citizens, we won't allow that to happen.
Well, it's tough as citizens. It's actually the government that has the control of water rights and it's not just, you know, local.
Yeah, it's the state government that operates it, yeah.
Well, and federal.
Yeah.
Because there's federal saying you have to have this waterway, we've got different basins, so it's tough.
Yeah, what the feds, not feds, what the federal government likes to do is, they like to purchase water rights and create acts. And I mean, have you guys heard of the Dolores National Act passed in 2022?
Yes.
Yeah. They made it a national park. And by making national parks, you're gonna create a lot more tourism. And that tourism's gonna create more pollution. It's gonna create a tougher, tougher situation for the local farmers and the people that actually live in that area. And I think that by not allowing the government to take over properties like that, and you know, the state also has a big play in it too, but I feel that water rights should be handled at a local level, at county levels. And instead of overriding the citizens, we need to be at least taking an acknowledgement of everyone's issues with it.
And how do you propose to do that?
Well, by meeting with local farmers, meeting with people in the areas that it does affect. And my platform is open to anyone who can come speak to me. I'm one of those people who put my direct email, my direct phone number on my platform so I can get those questions and answer them personally. And you know, people don't have ideas, ideas have people. And by getting ideas from everyone and hearing their ideas, you can kind of make your own and solidify your own, but at least you are understanding where everything's going and where it's coming from. And you know, we've always heard the term government is for the people and by the people. And I feel like it's lost that.
It has lost that. And that's one thing that really concerns me is the fact that our government has gotten too big.
Yeah.
And I think that our local control is gone.
Oh, absolutely.
I would rather see our county commissioners work on saving our property rights, saving our property's water, saving the feel of the rural community that we've had over here. And that's one reason why we are looking to make the best decisions possible and come the county commissioner time. We've got to have people in there that will act on these things.
Yeah.
And know the issues.
And know the issues.
And that are gonna listen to other solutions and not just what the higher government is kind of forcing us to do. That's, I feel like, a big issue with local government is you're funded by the state. And you know, by doing that, the state feels like they have override over you and they need to implement their laws on you and force, force local government to do things that they typically wouldn't have done prior to getting elected.
I'm going back to the finances and growth.
Yeah.
One of the things that I, when we've had others on, they're talking about attracting businesses, say like Costco. But the problem with attracting a business like Costco is the wage of people that work at Costco, which goes back to affordable housing.
Yep.
With that wage, that's not the kind of business that you attract, to attract somebody to be able to afford the housing. So one is, what kind of businesses would you attract? And then going back to your idea of affordable housing, again, how does the county have any impact on what a developer decides to build and also to charge?
Yeah, so I kind of had this really cool idea, right? Like what if we shut down both of the museums that we had to kind of combine them to make a super museum? And by doing that, we, we kind of grow programs for not only individuals and for doctors who have paleontology degrees, who have history degrees, but we can build more programs with CMU and allow students to work in these museums and to get kind of a hands-on education and then see where that future takes them. So I think a new, bigger museum could promote more people coming in and, you know, expanding and spending money. Local businesses that I would like to see grow here.
There you go.
Yeah, absolutely. Restaurants are a huge thing, I think local restaurants are awesome. Right now, all the restaurants we do have are starting, or all the local restaurants we have are starting to kind of weed out and go to corporate restaurants, government-funded buildings. I think a research facility could do really good for Grand Junction. We have the Colorado River, we have a lot of wildlife out here and we have some really thick programs over at the school that allows these students to come out in the wilderness and camp out for a week and survey the land. And that's, that's a really cool hands-on internship program happening there. And all the students that I've spoke with love it and agriculture is not even in their degree. And they're loving these. So essentially, the buildings and businesses that I want to see are ones that will, will invest in our future, right? I'm not saying that we need to come and open an FBI hub and allow the government to come in, but by expanding our economy, we're, we're expanding other situations like our airport and we're getting more traffic in from all over the state as well as other states. By getting this more traffic in, that's gonna invest more money into these local businesses. As citizens, we can support and support as much as we can to these people. But as you know, pricing and affordable housing is so high that it's kind of hard to support our friends and our local businesses. So we kind of do need that outside sources to come in and help support.
And how do they do that? I see you're maybe employing maybe 40 people.
Yeah.
That doesn't give enough money to, to change the, the cost of housing that people are seeing, like those new apartments on the 252 units that have no parking.
Yeah.
They said studio is $1,200 a month. And those that were off of 24 and a half road, we were told those are $2,000 a month for a two-bedroom. So if, if I'm making even $20 an hour, how am I going to afford $2,000 a month for, from that? And so the businesses that you attract, either I see that you're saying we're, we're gonna help those businesses so maybe they can help their employees earn a better living so that their employees can, can do better. But if, if I'm doing a project like your museum, that's only a few people and it's not enough, I don't think, to impact the county.
Yeah, you're right, like one business here and there, that's not gonna impact our county. So economy and economic growth, that's something that happens at a large level. It's not gonna take a year or two to fix our economy. It's gonna take multiple years and it's gonna take multiple businesses to come out here. But my biggest thing is creating diversity and competition.
Okay.
Right? So competition within businesses, that's what's gonna increase wages for not only the people working for them, but for other people too. And the aspect of me being a manager at Roadhouse, if another manager or another restaurant wants to come and hire me for more pay and more hours, then that's a no-brainer, right?
Right.
Absolutely. But that's called competition. So we need to have that availability in order to exceed and excel. And I understand, my mortgage is $2,400 a month. I'm a manager at Roadhouse, it's only 40 hours a week. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's super hard, but I grew up in a home where my dad worked in the oil fields and my mom was a stay-at-home mom. So back then, when you could live on one income and still be able to not only support yourself, but do fun things, like save that money to go on a family trip or go out to Bananas Fun Park every week, stuff like that, that's what I want to see back in us, right? We should be able to sustain our family on a one-income household.
That would be great.
That would be amazing.
That'd be amazing, definitely.
Okay, so now I want to ask about the fiscal.
Yeah.
How do you, what, what do you know about how the county spends money? Do you know the budget? Do you know how the budget is used? Where have you seen problems with the budget?
So I'll be honest, our county commissioners, they've, they've done a pretty good job with allocating the money and where it needs to go and how we're gonna earn it and where it's gonna be spending. Obviously, there, we could always spend more, right? We can always go bankrupt. But they did a really good job with managing it and not allowing that, but still growing our county. And I believe I could do the same thing, right? Maybe, maybe just a little bit better with, with new ideas coming in.
They had a little bit of controversy.
Yeah.
From Stanford the Constitution. There was somebody that had put out on email, and let me read this to you so we get it, so I get it straight for you.
Ruth has had a cold.
Yeah, I've had a cold, so trying to get rid of it. Okay. This person says, "When Jason Bias spoke to Stanford the Constitution meeting, he described himself as an electrician who worked alongside Cody Davis installing electrical and solar systems. That just didn't make sense to me, so I did a reference check on him. Why would a highly-paid electrician leave that job to pursue a political science degree? How could Cody Davis be qualified or want to install electrical systems as an owner of a construction company? I found Jason's license is for apprentice and it is expired. I asked Cody Davis about Jason's position. I called the electrical company for reference, but no response. My conclusion is that Jason embellished his experience. It is unethical to do that. I'm disappointed to discover this issue. So many times I have witnessed people being enthralled with a candidate who becomes a politician and disappoints the people. He is okay if Janet remains in office, I am not." Okay, that was that part of it. Now, the other side of that was, being at the same Stanford the Constitution meeting, this is another person, "I heard Jason's presentation a little differently. We have friends who own an electrical company and they refer to all of their employees as electricians, even if they are apprentices. He never stated that he worked for Cody. He stated that he worked on some of Cody's company's construction projects. Lastly, as far as changing careers, I've done that numerous times myself. Bottom line for me, Jason didn't embellish on his background or experience. I kindly disagree with your assessment of Jason being a viable candidate. What do you think about that kind of controversy and where do you stand, Jason?"
Yeah, so I'll be 100% honest with you. I, when my wife got pregnant and I was super scared, I was 19 years old, I didn't know what to do. So I went and joined the oil fields. My dad helped me get involved because that's what he did for most of his life. And I'm not built for the oil fields, I lasted probably like two weeks and I realized, I said, "This is hard work. I'm up all night long, I get to spend no time with my pregnant wife, I, I don't know what to do." Well, my buddy reached out and he said, "Hey, I have a super cool opportunity. If you come work with me, you can be an electrician and you can gain knowledge and licenses there." So I was an electrician apprentice for four years, right? But as an apprentice, you still need an apprenticeship license. So you still are considered a licensed electrician, just like any other electrical contractor would call. Whether you're an apprentice, a wireman, or a journeyman, you are an electrician.
Or a master.
Or a master, absolutely. And those are the ones that you have to work under. So I started working for Daryl McLean. He owns McLean's Electric. He built a lot of the Hyant Homes out here in the Redlands, in the ridges area. So I spent about a year and a half, almost two years, working under his name and helping him and building everything. Well, the same people who ran the crews at that company moved to a different company, AAA. AAA Electric, I followed my leaders and I worked with them, still as an apprentice because you need a certain amount of hours as well as a certain amount of experience. And then you still need to take a test and pass it. And that test is purely on codes and rules. And yeah, I did take the test and, and I failed because it is a super hard test. But that didn't turn me away from electrical, I still pursued it and I still did it. While working for Electric, or AAA, AAA Electric, their, their biggest contractors are gonna be Cronos and Dahl and Griffith Homes. At the time, I don't know if that's still correct. But at the time, those were our bigger, biggest contractors. So we were building homes left and right. And we were such a good crew that we, we could knock out two homes in a day as one crew. So with three other crews, essentially, we were knocking out four to five homes a day, which is a lot. And then, yeah, so Cody and his brother co-own Cronos. And then, yeah, that's, that's a building contractor. And you know, Cody did step away from kind of the leadership role in that to pursue politics. So his brother kind of operates and handles everything. But yeah, I worked side by side with, of course, then, because we would get a call saying, "Hey, this outlet's not working, can you send a guy to come out here and fix it?" Well, with the amount of knowledge I had and the capability of having a contractor there, I would be able to go and fix an outlet, take me like two minutes. And then I'll be good, I shake their hand, have a good day, everything's clear. So that's how I worked, side by side with the Davises.
He described himself as an electrician who worked alongside Cody Davis installing electrical and solar systems.
So the solar system. After I left AAA, I got an opportunity to kind of lead jobs and install solar panels with IONIQ Solar. So I hopped on that and it was, it was super great money. I was probably making around $2,000 a week with now another pregnant wife because we already had a kid and now she's pregnant with our third.
That sounded like your second wife. No, I'm teasing.
She will chew over that one.
Yeah, absolutely, she's probably watching this like.
I will get him.
No, I've only been married once and all my kids come from the same mother.
Okay, good.
Absolutely.
Well, no sister wives.
Nope, no sister wives. But the IONIQ Solar company was really cool. I was able to install solar panels on a lot of the homes and it was not Cody Davis's homes that I was installing solar on. That's where the controversy, I feel like, comes because it was Cronos's homes that I was doing electrical work with and for through AAA Electric. IONIQ Solar was a completely different era or area of electric. So instead of working with wiring houses, you're working on changing the way their electricity is operated and produced.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're looking at, not on the efficiency level, you're looking at a production level. And when I went over to IONIQ, I, I fell off a roof.
Oh.
It was the last step from the ladder to the roof. And you know, granted, my, my mind was working a lot faster, so I had a backpack on and I had a tool in one hand as I was climbing up the ladder. But it was a rainy day and that last step, transitioning onto the roof, the ladder caved in. And I fell down and I fell hard and I, I thought I died. I really did. But I opened up my eyes and tried to get myself up and both of my wrists were broken.
Oh, dear God.
I was in, I was in two full casts and we just closed on our house. So my wife, my pregnant wife had to pack the entire house, move the entire house, and unpack the entire house. And it, it sucked because, you know, I kind of did my own integrity and I realized that it wasn't the company's fault that this incident happened. So I didn't, I didn't want to do workman's comp. The company claimed that they would help me as long as, you know, I kept operating for them by doing surveys and assuring that houses are safe to install on. So I kind of did like more office work when I broke my hands. But I don't know if it was the company that went downhill or what, but I, I got fired because I couldn't produce anymore.
Right.
And just to find out that everyone else also got fired and the company did go bankrupt within a few months after that. But that's what, that's what changed my mind. Like I said, I've always been obsessed with politics since 2016. I'm, I'm one of those weird people who listens to podcasts and do my article research. I don't pay attention to news or social media, essentially. I try to, I try to focus on what's affecting citizens because I, I go through a lot of issues as a homeowner, as a hard-working, God-fearing individual, as a father, as a student. I, I get a ton of issues that come onto my plate and I know I'm not the only one. I know, I know we all see the same issues, the citizens. And so it's kind of cool to hear, experience them 100%. And you know, as a young politician, I, I'm not trying to be a robot. I want to show that I wasn't, I was an original citizen. I just, I'm obsessed with politics and I never knew that you can get involved in politics unless you're 60 years old or you have a million dollars in your bank account. Little did I know that the only requirements for a county commissioner are you're 18 years old and you're a United States citizen. Why qualify for both?
So, so we're gonna hit on that.
Yeah.
That's probably the biggest criticism, or not, maybe not even a criticism, but they say, "He's too young, what can he know?"
Yeah.
So, you know, he, he just doesn't know, he's naive, he has no idea about politics. What's your comeback? So say that you were talking to a delegate, which you, you know, since they have the, the assembly coming right up, what would you tell a delegate to say, "This is why I'm a better candidate than the other two that are running"? Why would I say, "Oh yeah, that's who I want to back"?
Well, you know, a lot of people do see my age as kind of, you know, restriction, something that's gonna hold me back, but I see that as kind of an advantage. You know, with being young, you can appeal to not only people who follow your same conservative values, but also the youth, right? I mean, I can get a lot of support from these younger generations and, and teach them how to be leaders. That's one thing that really lacks in, in schools and in the community is the teaching of leadership, right? I mean, it's, it's, some of it's God-given and you, God appoints leaders and you just become a leader out of nowhere. But a lot of it, it takes training and it takes vulnerability and accountability and credibility and transparency. And you need to include all of those to be a leader. Am I naive? Maybe. But isn't everyone else, to a certain aspect, right? When it comes to politics, no one knows everything that's going on.
Right.
Right? And it's the amount of involvement that's gonna educate you on what's going on. And we don't see a lot of people getting involved in politics. Everyone has, you know, opinions to say and, and their ideas, but how many of them have solutions to issues? And how many of them bring these solutions to our county commissioners, to our city councilmen, right? Are, are everyone in office in Mesa County has the availability for citizens to come and sit with them and discuss the issues that they're seeing firsthand? And come on a solution to solve these issues firsthand? And I, I think there's a real big lack of that in our community, you know?
So have you done that?
I absolutely have, yeah. I've met with Cody Davis, I spoke with Bobby Daniel on the phone. I haven't met with Janet, just because we are running for the same seat. I don't know if that I haven't met with Janet, just because we are running for the same seat, I don't know if that would benefit me or not, um but.
Brought a solution to those county commissioners, cause. You know, oftentimes people say some everybody said that somebody should do all the little things that nobody did do. Said that somebody should do all the little things that nobody did, so have you done that and what was your experience?
Well, I I haven't brought a solution to them, but we have talked about solutions to each other, yeah, absolutely. You know, at the end of the day, politics is politics, we're we all are citizens and Mesa County does affect every single one of us. Whether we're the leaders of it or not, it's still affecting us, so you do have to take in. Consideration of the leaders' ideas too, because. I hate to say it, but they do know more than the average citizen, because they're dealing with these issues firsthand, every single day, ten hours a day. Monday through Friday, absolutely.
And after hours.
Yep, and and at home with their kids and their wives, they're discussing these issues and solutions and. That that's what we need, we need a community that involves politics in the community. If we want Mesa County to be so strong and override a lot of this bureaucratic red tape that we see from the state. And from the federal government, then the only way to do that is to come together as a community and address these issues to the leaders. In full hands.
Well, I'm going to ask that one question that nobody wants to hear. But on the other hand, it is important to me, if for some unknown reason, you do not. Get a position in the county commissioner's seat. Will you continue? With your political uh aspirations, or will you consider that a failure and say enough?
No, um I I'm a I'm a firm follower of Jesus and we're taught, not only in church, but through the Bible. That God appoints leaders and God calls on each and every one of us and our future is already written before we even see it firsthand. And I believe that politics is my calling, like I said, I've been obsessed with this since I was seventeen years old. Um and I've always wanted to get involved, I like I said, I just never saw the availability. Never knew that I could. Until I was older or more wealthy and you know, it's as simple as just stepping outside and telling people that. You you wanna see change. And you wanna see it happen for the better and you wanna you wanna help individuals and that's that's what I love about government, right, is. Not all of it has to be, we're in charge, you do this. A lot of it is, hey, these are issues that are going on and this is how we're gonna help, you know, we're. Like I said, as as leaders, it's it's our job to listen to people and to hear these issues, but it's it's also our job to represent. Our area and our citizens.
Roundtable discussions and that sort of thing?
A hundred percent, a hundred percent, so sorry, to answer your question, Ruth, no, this is not gonna be it for me. I I'm a politician and I'm a politician at heart and if I don't get elected into county commissioner, I'm still gonna be working side by side with these county commissioners. And next seat that comes up will be mine, I mean, my overall goal is to be President of the United States twenty thirty-six. But you do have to work your way up.
Right, so how do you make yourself accessible to people and and how are you running your campaign so that people know about you? So tho- those are two separate questions, you know, how do you make yourself accessible? And I say this to everybody, because Ruth and I feel the same way, that county website is. And so is the city, it's beautiful, but and now I, you know, through their newsletter and stuff, you can get on, there's so much going on. It's hard to find, you know, what's going on, what do I need to be involved in and sometimes it's even the way it's presented. It sounds like, oh, that's an Oculus, who cares, and it could be something really important that you're not knowing. So how do you get the population to know, hey, this is an important issue, if you wanna be involved, this is important for you to look at. And be a part of, how can you do that?
Well, my platform and my website, it's posted on all my social medias and I've recently activated my social medias. Um from a long time ago to kind of push my political campaign out there, um I've made yard signs and posters, but. As a grassroots candidate, funding my own campaign, as well as being a father, a full-time father. And a student, it's 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 super slim, right, I can't put thousands of dollars into this campaign, like we really do rely on. Outside sources to to help fund and and build these posters and build these signs, but without. Getting those donations and everything, we can't do that, so I'm personally having to fund my own, build my own. Posters and and hand them out to people and and ask, you know, not only citizens of Mesa County, but students. Of CMU, because they come from all over Colorado, so they see issues that are happening in the front range that we don't even know about. And it's it's just really cool to to see everyone get so excited about a young politician, right, everyone is willing. As soon as they hear my ideas to share my my websites and and help knock doors for me. You know, I tend to stand for the constitution regularly on Mondays and I feel a great amount of support there and a lot of people have. Given me notes, have given me ideas and have taken some yard signs and put it in their own yards as well as their neighbors. Yeah, absolutely, so as for advertising, getting my word out, I will say it's super, super hard. Especially when you already have an incumbent who's going against you and her words have been out for a long, long time. So everyone, everyone knows about Janet Roland and everyone knows her ideas and her platform, um and. Uh yeah, it's it's super hard to overcome that and get your name out, but I feel like I'm doing a a fair good job doing it on my own so far. And everyone who has supported me, I'm super, super thankful that they're doing, they're doing all the hard work for me as well.
Your social media accounts, do you think that social media is the way to get your word out?
Um it kinda depends, I mean, I haven't seen a lot of influx. But I have seen that my supporters are growing stronger and stronger with every post I post and everything I share. Um it's it's super hard because, you know, it's activating of social media. Fairly recently, you're not you're not having a lot of followers, right, so you're having to actually go in and friend request people that you've met in the past. And and message them and say, hey, super cool to see you again, would you mind sharing my website, this is what I stand for. And you know, seeing that happen, it's it's super cool, because at the end of the day, that's your community, working together.
Exactly.
That sounds great, um I have one last question and then I don't know about Ruth, but my last question is. How much do you know about the county and how it works and how did you gain that knowledge?
Yeah, so I've been attending the county commissioners meetings via online and occasionally in person when I have the free time. And so I hear about these issues a lot and a lot of my leaders at CMU are firsthand involved. With Mesa County, a couple of my political science professors are part of are part of the cha- Chamber of Commerce. And and Mesa County works really well with the college and with these professors. And by getting their involvement, it's it's expanding the growth of politics as well. Because you're able to teach others and you know, when you're teaching these professors, they teach their students. You know, we we hear in political science courses all the time about the issues that are happening here in Mesa County, as well as national politics, right, cause we still are. College students, so it's imperative that we learn everything, um but I, yeah, it's super fascinating.
I think that you've pretty well answered my questions.
Well, we appreciate you being on.
I I'm super humbled to be here in front of you ladies, thank you so, thank you so much for allowing me to come talk.
Well, you've been watching Mesa County Compass, this is the truth as we see it, the facts as we know them, you decide.
Absolutely, thank you.